Can't see what all's going on in the commission room, but I know that I heard Commissioner Ryan, Commissioner Hoppick, and I think Commissioner France. So with that, I'll assume we're ready to go since we've got kind of a full study session today, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Driscoll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna be a short bit here at the beginning and a very short bit at the end, and leave the rest to Marty to get into the details, because I think that's what we're here for. Just as a quick reminder, if you're catching up, this is presentation two in a four presentation series. We started this conversation off by just kind of all agreeing that we're on the same page, that housing is an issue, and what that looked like, and how we wanted to move forward. And that evolved into updating the Lift Salina Plan. This presentation is focusing primarily on a demographics update, and also addressing an example pro forma for multifamily. Where that really kind of originated from was a lot of the questions that we were asking as a community. Why is it so expensive to build multifamily? Why aren't we building more multifamily? With new employees coming to town, how many new houses do we need? What does this picture really look like, so that we could understand from a policy perspective and an action perspective, what our future would look like? The meeting that will come after this is the first Monday in April, and that's the third presentation, and that's gonna focus a little bit more on other types of incentive tools that could be applicable here in Salina that we may want to use, and also doing a comparison with other communities and how they're reacting to some of these same issues that we are having. We are not alone in this housing crisis. It is across the country. And then lastly, the fourth meeting, which will be the first meeting or first Monday in May, will take really the feedback the commission's been giving, and start to outline a roadmap of sorts for implementing any new incentive policies or housing policies the commission thinks necessary to get to the objective of how do we address some of these problems, which ideally brings us right back to where we're at today, is understanding that problem. With that, I'm gonna introduce Marty Schukert. Marty is with RDG Planning and Design. He worked with the community before. He helped to draft the Lift Salina Plan, which was adopted in 2016, and that is our current housing plan, and asked Marty to come back and help us update this information, help us, since he's so familiar with the community, also help us understand what's going on in the region. RDG is a bit, works throughout the Midwest, working with many of our neighbors in other states, and brings a lot of great insight. Marty's been doing this kind of work for over 40 years, and is actually a pillar in the planning community, so we're very blessed to have him. Even longer than that. So Marty's a great resource, and we're just appreciative of having him here, and the resources that RDG brings to this project. With that, Marty, if you want to kick us off.
Thanks, Lauren. Great. Well, it's great to be with you this afternoon, and taking you through a little bit of a tour through housing land here in, on this beautiful afternoon in March. As Lauren said, what I'm going to do is to go through a process of talking about needs and demand based on the latest information that we've got, which is the 2019 American Community Survey. The ACS is done every year by the Department of the Bureau of the Census, and it's done on the basis of a random survey. So the data are not as accurate as the actual census count might be, but they're the best thing that we have right now to be able to go on. So we're going to start out with population assumptions. These are when we're projecting future growth, the numbers and assumptions that we work from to help generate as accurate a forecast as we can. And by the way, if you have a question or need clarification, please let me know. I can get going like a locomotive and never stop. So if you have a question, please feel free to interrupt. So first of all, looking forward 10 years, we project-
Sorry, real quick. Jacob, would you please share the presentation perfect?
Right.
And just so the mayor knows, and everybody watching at home, Deputy City Manager Woods is running the PowerPoint. So Marty, if you could just, when you need a next slide, just hit next slide, and Jacob will move it along.
Right. Next slide. And next one after that, too. And even after that, it'll be, there we go, and one more. There we go. Okay, so here you see the assumptions that we're using in projecting population for Salina going forward. First of all, we are suggesting a 0.36% annual growth rate for the next 10 years. Lift Salina was a little more optimistic than that. It predicted a half percent per year, but the performance over the last 10 has not generated that. 0.36% is the average growth rate that we have experienced in Salina over the last 30 years. So using that as a base number is a pretty good assumption. It's relatively conservative, but since people rely on these studies for making investments, it's not a bad thing to be conservative. Certainly, one thing that generates a demand for housing and positive growth in its base is the fact that we now have over 1,100 existing open jobs in the Salina market, according to the Chamber of Commerce. It is important to note that whatever we project in 2021 can change dramatically. So if a new plant or a new facility opens that we didn't anticipate, it could throw those numbers off. But for right now, this is a pretty good guess.
Mr. Schukert, you said to jump, and so I wanted to ask a question, just in terms of your assumptions. When I look at the census data that's available from 2010 to 2019, it shows us like a two and a half, 3% actual population decline. And I assume you're taking a longer look at that over a 30-year period, but given some of the demographic trends in terms of rural communities having a lot more outmigration to urban communities, I mean, do you think that 0.36% annual growth rate is maybe still a little bit optimistic?
No, absolutely not. And it's a great question. First of all, ACS, I think, tends to underestimate population, number one. So these numbers, it's weird that they tend, to me, to my mind, they tend to underestimate population, overestimate vacancy. So whether those things are related or not, I don't know, but I think that we have generally found that to be the case. Number two is population increases are conditional, conditional upon, for example, building housing. So if you're not producing or underproducing housing and generating a demand for it, because people are not homeless, they're going somewhere else, but it just doesn't happen to be Salina. So that's going to tend to drive population down as well. So look at, look at a positive growth rate as being conditional. If we do things that accommodate this population potential, we will achieve that population potential, if that makes sense at all, but-
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. Yeah, but it's a great question. Okay, so number two is that we know that there's going to be significant industrial expansion. So the chamber is documenting between now and 2025, 900 new jobs in Salina, in the adjacent industrial areas, and from '25 to '23, 200 new jobs in addition to that, that are already more or less in the bank. Now, again, keep in mind that these are projections and plans, and it would be wonderful if it were more. It would not be so good if it were less, but they seem to be pretty imminent in terms of specific industries telling the chamber they're going to be hiring new jobs. This is Vision Aviation, Great Plains, Chuan's, and there'll be a host of other smaller ones, too. Now, we don't assume that 900 jobs translates to 900 households. That just doesn't happen, because there'll be people who, you know, will work in Salina and live in Linsburg, or even places that are farther away, or in rural areas. So, and a lot of times, projections will make the mistake of saying, oh, 900 jobs means we need to build 900 housing units. That doesn't work. It doesn't work that way. So as a correction factor, we assume that 40% of those potential jobs, assuming they're full-time jobs, are going to generate new potential households in Salina. And so we add that back into the base population projection. And then we're assuming from a population perspective, although this is kind of irrelevant when you're looking at households, that the number of people per household will be the same as we have right now, which is about 2.38. And that's interesting, too, because households on one end are getting bigger, as, no, households like my kids have children, and they're getting smaller on the other side, where households like mine get smaller, unfortunately. So it's a pretty good projection over the next 10 years to keep that number constant. Then finally, we come to household population. So it's important to understand that households are what generate housing units. Households mean the number of people who live in the city who don't live in group quarters. Group quarters being nursing homes, or college dormitories, or other kinds of congregate living situations. That number in Salina is 97%. So 97% of Salina's population lives in a household of some sort, maybe a one-person household, but generating a demand for an independent housing unit. Those are the numbers that we are using in terms of looking forward to 2030, and that becomes the basic generator of new housing demand. So if we could have the next slide. So this is what that number looks like now until 2030, and I think somebody's speaker's open, or good, there it goes. Okay, so I'm in a ballpark here, and you can get an echo when the public, the PA announcer announces the pinch hitters. Those of you who are aficionados of the movie Airplane will know what I'm talking about there. But the, so we are assuming that the 2020 count, when it comes in, will be a little bit more than the 2019 ACS, and that count that we're using is 47,162. If you remember the ACS, the number that's in that document is 43,000, I think, 988, or something like that. It's 46,988. So a little bit of population growth, using the assumptions that we are using, with those new jobs, we'll get a pretty big spike in the next five years, up to 48,974, and then a slower, kind of more normal increase in the next five years after that, possibly breaking the 50,000 mark. And again, assume that these are potential populations, and not necessarily predicted populations. So to achieve that number means building housing, so that people actually live in Salina. You'll see in the next row, the number of those people who are attributable to employment expansions. These are the new households, 40% of the projected population, of projected job growth, that will establish households in Salina. And the demand that those households will create will add up to, by 2025, 19,960 households or units of housing, and 20,400 by 2030. So those are the base numbers that we are using right now to project overall housing need. Next slide. And again, if you have a question, please feel free to stop me. Okay, there are a few other assumptions that we use in looking at housing need forecasts going forward. The HBS uses a, or assumes in 2019 that there's a 6.2% vacancy rate in Salina. We know that that's overstated. It may not be overstated if we consider all housing units rather than habitable housing units. So a lot of this number is generated by units that are uninhabitable. They may even be older mobile homes, or things like that, as, you know, as we know from our previous studies in Salina, that that does exist. So we are assuming that that rate, real or not, will remain stable. So we're taking that factor out of the equation. 6% is a pretty reasonable vacancy rate anyway, to provide choice in the housing market. And as you'll see in a couple of minutes, when we've done surveys of existing rental housing, it's very hard to find a rental unit in contemporary development in the city of Salina. We also, another factor, small factor, that contributes to housing demand is replacement. So here we're looking at the number of demolitions, of residential demolitions that have taken place over the 10, over the last 10 years, and projecting that forward into the next five years. So between 2010 and 2020, in Salina, there's been demolition of an average of 16 units per year, and we're just continuing that number on for the next 10 years.
If I might interrupt, this is Commissioner Fran. I was a little surprised by that number. What is happening to these places where the homes are being demolished? Are they staying as vacant lots? Are they, you know, being redeveloped? Are they being sold to neighbors as an ancillary to the existing property? I mean, what's happening to them?
That's probably a good question for Lauren, but usually it's all of the above. So there'll be some vacant lots, there'll be some cases where these are units that are lost in order to build something else. So for example, typically, a commercial expansion will buy a house or two next door, demolish those, and expand. It's not necessarily all a bad thing. It just, so we don't know what, and in some cases, yes, those lots will be purchased by a neighbor, and they'll demolish the house and do a garden or something of that sort. So the disposition can be a little, can be everything that you mentioned, but they're just, from our perspective right now, they're just, they're lost housing units, units that have gone out of the inventory. And within the next couple of months, we'll be looking at where those vacant lots might be clustered, and how they might be reused. So finally, the assumption on occupancy, and that's how much do we need from an owner versus rental point of view. We are assuming, and again, these are just, these are assumptions, that our need over the next five years will be about 50/50. There, that is, the people will take jobs and be looking for rental units in the short term. So the demand for rental units will be somewhat, or a little bit higher than the existing percentage of owner-to-rental occupancy. That will change over the following five years to be a more normal 60/40 rental owner-owner rental split, as people settle down, and we're in kind of a more normal housing production market. So, again, these assumptions are changeable. I mean, we can vary these, and they'll produce a little bit different numbers, but for right now, they're probably a pretty good working assumption. So now let's go to the next slide. So here's what this all means when we do the numbers and put all of this together. So you'll see, in the third row, the, well, in the first row, the demand created by actual households for occupy units, we then add in a vacancy factor, which increases that number, so that there's choice in the market. You don't want to have only the number of units, as you have people, because then there's nowhere to move. It is a market that just doesn't, that people can't find a place to live. We then add in the replacement need, and those numbers together give us the overall housing need that we, housing, number of housing units that we need at the end of each of those five-year periods. And so we then calculate the need for that period by subtracting, by taking the difference between the end of the period and the beginning of the previous period. So for 2020 to 2025, that's going to be 21,279 minus 20,462. That, those, and for 2030 to 2025, that demand over that five-year elapsed period will be 21,748 minus 21,279. So the cumulative need, the number of target units to build for base population growth and new jobs over this next five years, is 865 units, based on our assumptions, which we think are reasonable ones. And then from 2025 to 2030, based on what we know now, that will drop off to 469. That means an average annual production of about 170 units or so, over the next, for a year, for the next five years, that then will drop off to about 90, 94. Now, keep in mind that in Lift Salina, which we did in 2016, using a 5% or 0.5% growth rate, we were looking at about 105 to 110 units a year. So our projections are a little bit more modest than that in the 2025 to 2030 range, but considerably higher than that because of job growth in the 2020 to 25 range. Now, we split those up. So if we're assuming 50/50 split, that will be, translates to 432 owner-occupied units, and 433 rental units, because we can't build half a unit. So, and it's an odd number. So it's, we gave the majority here to the rental units.
Marty, I'm sorry, Commissioner, either my math is off, or that number 865 is off. I'm coming up with 817. Between 20-
Yeah, I, and-
And the overall picture may not make a big, big difference when you spread it out.
Yeah, but it's a good catch, and I think the problem is that my base number is off.
Hmm, okay.
The 865 is right, and the 2462 is wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but it's a great, that's a good catch. We'll check it. But, yeah, but I think that's, I think that's what's going on, because the 490 figure should match that, too. Yeah, that's a, yeah, I'll check. There's something, there's something wrong in the spreadsheet.
All right, thank you.
Okay, yeah, great, but thanks. Yeah, we'll definitely check that out. Yeah, it's going to be in the same, it's not going to make a lot of difference, but it's, but it's a good, it's a great catch. In fact, as soon as we're done, I'm gonna fix it, otherwise I'll forget. Okay, so then, then that number, as you can see, changes to a different equation, or different distribution in the following five years of 60% or 281 owner-occupied units, and 188 rental-occupied units in that following five-year period. Next slide, please. Now, what have we been doing in the past? Well, this is, this is the, this is the construction activity in Salina for the next 10 years. So you can see that up through 20, really, 2012, we were developing housing at a fairly reasonable rate, and then that dropped off significantly, particularly in the single-family detached range. We really haven't built very much in terms of rental housing. So that 32 units that you see in 2011 is the heritage at Hawthorne, and the 53 units that you see in 2020 is Lee Lofts, but there's not very much there, other than those two significant projects. And that's really our immediate problem, is the lack, is a real lack of rental production. The other interesting thing, and this is a phenomenon that we're seeing in a lot of communities, is why is there such a drop-off in single-family detached development, when the economy has been quite good between 2010, 2010, or kind of earlier parts of the decade, and the later parts of the decade? And the reason for that, I'm convinced, or the explanation for it, is that we are building single-family with increasing construction costs. We're building single-family houses for a diminishing sector of the market. So when you can't, when you can't build something for less than $300,000, the number of people who are being served by the single-family construction market despite lower interest rates gets smaller and smaller and smaller. And so if, so the piece of pie that's accounted for by single-family detached is getting smaller and smaller, that's not a subject that we'll get into in great detail today, but it will be a subject for our next time together, as we look with a little bit more focus at single-family development, too. So that's, so over the last 10 years, from 2010 to 20, we have generated an average of 63 units a year. Keep in mind that the kind of stable 0.36% growth is about 90, 90 units per year, a little bit fewer than that. But our, but our demand is still lower, our demand is still higher than growth. And you can see that we have demolished or lost 175 units. So our net gain is 511, or about 47 units per year, over the last 10 years. And that, I think in Salina's case, accounts for some of the fact that the population does not seem to have grown to the rate that it could have. So next slide. This is, this is interesting, and it's, and it's, it's the hardest comparison, or hardest table that we have to explain. But what we've done here is using 2019 ACS data, looking at the number of people who break into different income groups, different income cohorts, match the range of housing units and their prices that people of that, that would be equivalently matched to people of that particular income stratum, and then compare the two numbers. So we might have, well, if you look at the line, it may be a little bit hard to see, depending on how big your screen is, but if you look at the line that says, the second row in that, in that chart, this is looking at people with an income range of $25,000 to $50,000 of annual income. And in Salina, according to the ACS, there are about 5,100 households in that income range. There, now, if we looked at the number of housing units that are paired with people in that income range, that would be ideally affordable to them, because they're, they're, they have, they have prices between, house values between 60 and $125,000, or rents between about $500, $500,000. There are about 8,900 units in that range. And so that's where you see this kind of weird number of an oversupply of 3,820 units. Now, you could look at that and say, well, we don't have an affordable housing problem, but what it's telling us is that there are higher But what it's telling us is that there are higher income households that are occupying lower cost housing. And uh, so it's a, it's a, it's a mismatch, it's hard to tell people they're not paying enough for housing. But that's, that's in a way, kind of, kind of what's happening. Um, so, so it, it indicates that many households in Salina are, are paying a relatively small percentage of their, of their incomes for housing because of this mismatch. It also shows us that housing in general in Salina is undervalued, which, which was a, a, a finding of, of, of Lift Salina and explanation for some of the um, lack of production that, that we're sometimes experiencing. Now, if you look at the other end of the scale, there are fewer units than available in some of these higher or middle ranges, then we have people who can afford to live either by renting or by buying in those ranges. So that suggests that there's a move up market uh, or a more middle income market that, that, that could be opened up, and if that began to get produced, then, then, then some of the lower cost or, 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 or lower priced houses would be, or, or housing units would become more available to, to uh, as starter homes or for other populations. So what does this tell us in general? One is that there, there are opportunities for move up housing, it's a good thing. Because um, if you can't build a house anymore, that's in a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty thousand dollar range, unless it's uh, a townhouse or, or, or an unusual kind of, of construction. This is why we've got such a huge overall affordable housing problem in, 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 in the country. We can conclude that in general, um, housing in, in the city is relatively undervalued, um, which, which is something that we found in the earlier study. And that production, uh, even of market rate units is, is a significant challenge, so we're just not, we're, we, we don't seem to be um, producing housing in that, or at least enough housing in that, in, in that sort of attainable range. So it's all, it's all kind of weird, it's not, it's not a pattern that's unusual at all. But uh, in, in fact, we find it in most um, non metropolitan areas, but, but it's um, it, it, it is suggestive of a way out of um, of some of the affordable housing issues.
You know, uh, this is Commissioner Franz again, if I might interrupt. Explain what you mean when you say housing is undervalued.
Means that if, if you looked, um, if you, if you looked at uh, a neighborhood and, and, and I'm thinking about one like the Centennial Park neighborhood, just because we've, we've done in, in Lift Salina, a lot of work on that. You'll see that the, the prices, the, the, the value, sales value of houses in that range, in that neighborhood are probably right now in a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty thousand dollar range. If you put a neighborhood like that somewhere else, uh, those houses might be worth fifty thousand dollars more.
So it really is the, the, the asking price or the sales price of the houses, when you say undervalued, they are below what they should be.
Yeah, they're below what the replacement value would be.
I have, I have a hard time getting my head around that, because that is just the opposite of what our, I think our natural perception is.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it isn't, it isn't so true of new neighborhoods, but it is true of older neighborhoods. But yeah, excellent, it's an excellent, um, it's an excellent question. We're, we're, we will be, like, like I said, in, for our next time together next month, we'll be looking in more detail at, at the at the single family market, at, at that market, um, with some, with some geographic examples, and I think it's going to show you what this all kind of means. And, and the interesting thing is that you might have, you might have a family uh, living in that neigh, I mean, people live in neighborhoods that they choose to live in, but living in that neighborhood could afford another neighborhood uh, or afford a more expensive house for occupying uh, that kind of unit. Again, that sounds really weird, because you, people, uh, I mean, I, I, um, my house is, is, um, is, is, it, it's, is probably since it's all paid out, it's definitely cheaper than I could afford, but um, but I, I'm not about to move until I have to, or I get carried out or something like that, so. Um, yeah, it's, 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 it's not, it's an observation of the market and not necessarily saying, well, sorry folks, you gotta move so that you can make room for somebody else, it's just a comparison for um, uh, that, that helps to inform policy a little bit. Next, uh, next slide, please. So now, here, in this, in this slide, we're, we're taking the um, the new development that we are projecting to happen and, and distributing it across um, uh, different price ranges. And basically here, we're assuming that the relative income distribution of new population, of new growth, is going to be fairly much the same as, as we've had in the past, we inflated, of course. But, but, but the affordability categories and the overall relative distribution of income groups, uh, we're assuming that, that, that it stays pretty much the same. So in other words, we're not expecting an influx of millionaires between twenty twenty and twenty thirty. It'll be the same kind of relative uh, income distribution as, as, as we have now. And you can see what, what this, this all means. So the biggest single chunk of, of that market, of that future market for single family is under two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Um, but, um, but those are very hard to deliver as far as new construction goes without, without significant programming and, and, and assistance, and we'll look at what that means a little bit next time. But if we look at, at the middle ranges, that is people from two twenty five to three hundred thousand dollars, which the market actually can deliver, there's a significant need there for, um, and, and then even when we get into what's now the higher end, over three hundred thousand dollars, there's also a pretty significant need. When we look at rental markets, you'll see that we generally will wind up um, putting a larger percentage of the more moderate income population in rental units than we do in owner occupied units because of the cost of new uh, owner occupied construction. So when we look at rents that are under a thousand dollars, and as you'll see in a few minutes, that is a moderate rent in, uh, in, in terms of new construction. Uh, of that six hundred and twenty units, about uh, well, actually about four, it would be for about five hundred of those are going to be um, uh, under a thousand dollars. And I'm seeing another five hundred or six, another problem with the numbers here. Now I have to see what's going on, but, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the um, the totals there. But there's still, there's, there's still an issue with, with the spreadsheet. Okay, so next slide. Um, so, so here, um, here we have uh, a sample of existing larger rental units, rental projects in, in the city. So these are, um, are, are looking at um, uh, anything that, that we could, we could discern that's over about thirty to forty units in a single place. And with little exception, there's nothing available in any of those bigger developments. Um, you can see that, that they, there's, um, there's um, housing stock in um, that's avail, rental, rental, uh, that's available in, in the ridges, which is our biggest single um, rental project. But most of the, most of the rest of the uh, existing significantly sized units don't have any vacancy. Um, so uh, that already points to a very significant rental shortage. Um, the other thing that's kind of interesting, and, and when we get into looking at the finances of those, this is going to be, this, this will um, will start to make sense, is that our typical density of rental development uh, is about thirteen to fourteen units per acre. So as we've studied a sort of theoretical rental project, that's what we, um, we, we come up with. Um, and that generally the market rents in Salina right now are somewhere between seventy five cents a square foot per month and a dollar a square foot per month. So um, so keep that, and keep that number in mind. Uh, we used to think that a dollar a square foot per month, which would correspond to say a thousand dollars a month for a thousand square foot apartment, uh, would be a pretty high, uh, pretty high rent. But um, but, but those days are, are, are really more or less gone, and yet, you know, one issue is people are used to paying lower rents, and when you get above thou, a thousand dollars, it feels pretty, pretty expensive. But um, but you can see that um, that in, in these uh, this sample, which I think is pretty much everything that isn't assisted living, which is a different market entirely, is, is pretty much unavailable right now or has a waiting list. So uh, next slide. So our, 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 our summary findings are that, first of all, uh, from, from our investigation of what's out there in the market now, we have very low vacancy, we have uh, market rent of about a dollar a square foot. Uh, there's not been very much in the way of recent development. Um, Lee Lofts being the newest. Um, a lot of the inventory is restricted to seniors. Um, and our typical residential density is in that range of thirteen to fourteen units per acre, although um, uh, the ridges goes up higher than that, goes up to twenty, almost twenty units per acre. Okay, so any questions so far? Great, yeah, and, and um, I, I apologize for the um, spreadsheet or arithmetic errors, but we'll get those fixed and get those numbers corrected and back out to you as soon as I can. Okay, so now let's look at a, let's look at a, a, a one of the problems that we, we are dealing with right now, and that is an analysis of rental housing and uh, what goes into it and what it costs to produce it. So in our hypothetical example here, we are looking at a fifty unit project, just kind of a gen, this is a, a, a generic development. At thirteen units per acre, that needs, means we would need a piece of property a little bit less than four acres to accommodate that. Um, you can see the assumptions about gross residential and net residential area, because we're, we're assuming that our average unit's going to be about nine hundred square feet. Might be a little bit generous, but, but, you know, again, it, it, it's um, that, that will be uh, a very generous one bedroom or a pretty average two bedroom unit. And, and that we have to provide for on-street parking, and we do that at about one point seven five stalls per unit. Um, so now we go to, what does it cost to develop this? Okay, well, first of all, we have to buy a parcel of land, so um, uh, according to uh, uh, to our friends in the community development department, to buy a uh, 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 a square foot of improved land, that is with all urban services, so we're not, we're, we're, we're not accounting for infrastructure, that's already built, it's about four bucks a square foot. So our land cost for that site is about six hundred and seventy thousand um, dollars. And if we divide that up into um, uh, fifty units, that's about thirteen thousand dollars in a unit, which is pretty much about right in, in the market. Um, figuring building construction at a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, and that's what contractors tell us it's costing right now, that number comes out to, for hard construction to be about seven point nine million dollars. Um, now, can, keep in mind that construct, contractor's profit is usually embedded in that number. So uh, so we're not, they're not, um, this is not a developer's fee or anything that, that those, that it's, but it, but includes the the profit related to the actual construction of the um, of, of the unit. Parking um, is an added site improvement, so that usually costs about five dollars a square foot. And we figure as a rule of thumb with uh, parking, drive aisles, landscaping, driveways, those kinds of things, about three hundred and fifty square feet per um, per uh, stall. That's another hundred and fifty three thousand dollars in our uh, fifty unit project. Other site development, namely turf, trees and so forth, can average out to be a couple dollars a square foot. And then we add in a five percent construction contingency. So our hard cost for building that particular fifty unit project is about nine point five million dollars. Um, not that far from two hundred thousand dollars a unit, which is a lot more than we were used to when, when even a project like the ridges might have been built. Then we add soft costs into that, so soft costs are development fees, architects, engineers, testing, um, very, finance fees, uh, all that, all those kind of, uh, all those kind, interim fi, all that, all that kind of stuff. And that, uh, as a rule of thumb, is about twenty five percent of hard costs. So our total development cost, everything considered, is about eleven point nine million dollars to build a fifty unit project. You're already beginning to see part of the problem. Um, now let's go to the next slide. Now, how, how are these projects financed? Well, usually it's by some combination of, of equity and debt. Equity uh, being people who are investing in property primarily for tax benefits. So um, to give you an example of what, of, of what that means, let's say that, um, you know, you, you, we have heard a lot about what we call LITEC, or uh, low income housing tax credit developments. And a LITEC project that is a hundred percent low and moderate um, income uh, provides a nine percent tax credit to an investor uh, over each year for a ten year period. So attack, keep in mind that, that a tax credit is, is effectively, if you need the tax credit cash in your pocket. It's not like a tax deduction, it's, it's actually money off your tax liability. So let's say that, that I am wealthy enough that I have a hundred thousand dollars to put into equity in a low income housing tax credit project. Um, and I've got, uh, I've got um, in, a, a pretty big income tax liability. Every year, I am able to take nine percent of that investment or nine thousand dollars off of my inter, un, income tax liability um, to um, as, as a result of my investment in that low income housing tax credit project. So, so effectively, if I'm in the right tax bracket, I get nine thousand dollars a year on my hundred thousand dollar investment or nine percent every year for ten years. And then at the end of ten years, or actually fifteen years, when that project sells to somebody else, then I get my uh, appreciated value back out of it as well, it's not a bad investment. And um, so I'm not so worried about whether that project is making money or not. Now, in this example, I have assumed for um, for argument's sake that this is not a LITEC project, and the investors in this may or may not, but may want a five percent cash, on cash annual return, in addition to the appreciation that they're recovering on, on that development. So we factored that into our little pro forma example here. Um, so that means that the rest of the money, seventy percent uh, is financed by debt. Uh, a good, a, 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 a good interest term, uh, even now is four point five percent for a commercial project like this. Um, a reasonable loan term for permanent financing would be twenty five years. And then I've shown a, a couple of assumptions about construction financing that gets loaded into the uh, cost of money later on, but cost of money later on, but but for our purposes today, we won't even deal, we won't even deal with that. So 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 that's how my project, my little project here is going to get financed. And so the next slide is going to show us some interesting stuff. So on on this project, assuming that that Microsoft Excel has not failed me, four point five percent on, which is not necessarily a good assumption, four point five percent on a twenty-five-year note is going to produce annual debt service of about five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. My O and M, operations and maintenance, is going to be, in this example, two fifty a square foot every year. That's another hundred and thirty-two thousand, especially since the project is new. The property taxes, Celine County's consolidated tax rate appears to be one point three seven percent of property, of assessed property value. And then I add in a return on equity. In my case here, I'm expecting this thing to pay me five percent per year. That may be kind of unrealistic, but but there it is. And and that's going to generate another hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar drain on cash flow on this project. That means that I need, in order to make up all of these fixed annual costs, an income from rents of about of a little under a million dollars on my on my project, on my nine hundred and eighty, of nine hundred and eighty-six thousand. If I now divide that by the leasable area, not the common area, but by the leasable area, and and it's interesting that there are new developments that for a variety of reasons, and this is one of them, are are reducing the amount of common area. That is hallway space, public space, other things that don't produce revenue in in their developments. My leasable area is forty-five thousand. So I'm looking for a yield of twenty-one ninety-three per square foot per year. If I divide that by twelve to get the monthly rent equivalent, that's a dollar eighty-three. If I multiply that by nine hundred to see what the rent's going to be on my on on my nine hundred square foot unit, it's going to be about sixteen hundred and forty-seven dollars. That's going to be considered to be pretty high in Salina. And and although there are people who can afford to do that, and it's not that unusual in other places by any means. In fact, if you're building, trying to do this in, say, Los Angeles where my kids live, this would be dirt cheap because their rents are about twice that high, even even for something of this size. That that is, that that's what the number winds up being. So so we know that in if these assumptions, which are which are pretty normal assumptions with with some are 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 valid, and I think they are. And and they've been, they've been sort of vetted with people around around the city. We we are looking at new construction that is significantly above the market rate that people are now used to paying in Salina. And hence, things have to be done, at least in the short term, to help reduce that cost. Any questions there so far?
So you said, you said, you said specifically just now that those are things that need to be done in the short term. Do you see that as, once these units are up and performing, that that's that they won't require some sort of subsidization in the future?
That's a good, that's, that is, that is a, a very valid question. The answer to is, I don't know, that that the that the market may mature and develop to the point that that there's, there's more, there, there's more there are higher rents that are out there, and people are used to paying those. And so as a result, this isn't so far above above the housing market. It is really interesting, by the way, and and this gets into national housing trends, that right now across the country, there is a distinct shortage in single-family housing stock and a distinct surplus of rental housing. Not necessarily affordable rental housing, but rental, but but higher-end rental housing. Because a lot of construction that's taken place around the country, including in in a city like mine, which is Omaha, there's been a very large amount of, say, downtown housing development or 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 other or 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 other higher cost-market-rate development. And and it's it's, it's, it is in many cases turning into a surplus. Salina's problem is not bad. Salina has not, has not really participated in this rental housing boom, nor have a lot of smaller towns or and medium-sized cities like like yours. So so it's something that you'll read about, but it but you'll read about it more in the New York Times than 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 in local newspapers.
Marty, Commissioner Hoppick here. Under ROI, you you show a five percent. Isn't it typical that individuals that are investing in this type of property are looking more like for an eight to ten percent return?
Not if they've got, if they've got tax, if if they've got tax liabilities that they're trying to depreciate it against.
But you're talking about, okay, you're not talking about a straight-out investment without any.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that that, you know, and and also in in these cases, the equity, that that's going to make the situation look even worse, too. But yeah, but yeah, I mean, the the, you know, if you're, if you're, if you're getting five percent per year, and then the the building appreciation that sold in five to seven years, and you're accumulating that, your internal rate of return is going to be higher than that. So so you, you know, you 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 look at it from that kind of perspective. The interesting problem with LIHTC projects is that they they have to remain in low, and they need to remain in low-income occupancy for fifteen years. So so as a result of that, the the return, the annual return on those projects, without any additional cash on cash payment is nine percent. Okay, so if we could go to the next slide. So so now we've, we've, we've done a little bit of 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 an analysis on 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 the different things that can be done to reduce that rent or different assumptions that could be made. So for example, if if the same project had had tax abatement, then you could, you could reduce that rent by at 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 your current county tax rate by twenty-two cents per square foot. If the construction cost is reduced, if there's a construction, if if there's a more efficient way of building, say, going from a hundred and fifty, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot, which is not something you've got control of, that could reduce it by thirteen cents. The higher density does not seem to have a whole lot of impact, which kind of surprised me a bit. If the ROI is is decreased or deferred and ballooned to the end on sale, that has a huge savings per 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 square foot. If land is free, it it saves six cents. If the if the interest rate is subsidized, that that has another major impact. So some of these things that we normally think are are really significant incentives sometimes aren't so much. And of the things that are actually within the city's control or or programs' control, things like like interest rate lowering or tax abatement really can have the 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 most significant annual impact on on rents. And then, of course, the LIHTC tax benefits, which really get rid of the need for a cash-on-cash ROI, really do have very significant effect on the cost of of the unit to the to the renter.
Commissioner Franz here. All of this presumes that the site that's being built on has all services in place.
That's correct.
So if you have, the site is undeveloped, and you have to go in, and you have to build the streets and water and sewer lines, and, you know, all of the services that go with a developable site, I presume that that would change his number quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah, if you, so so then we would, and it's a good idea to do that. If we ran a sort of greenfield simulation, then then that's, that's going to add to that cost. And that's where density really comes in. Because density, when when, if you've got to provide new services, that that's one of the reasons why density seems to have so little an impact here because we're assuming those services are all in there. But if you're, if you're providing new services to to a project, to an area to build multifamily development, if you're building that development at, say, twenty to twenty-five units per acre versus thirteen to fourteen units per acre, that's a significant savings in the initial cost of the of construction. And so and so in greenfield site, higher density does make a significant difference. In sites that are already served and that cost is already in the ground, it makes it it makes a smaller difference, other than being more efficient from a variety of other points of view.
One of the other deliverables, or one of the part of the deliverables of this project is getting kind of one of these pro formas for a couple of different scenarios, Commissioner Franz. Just based on time and how quickly we're trying to move that along, we thought this would be the most pertinent one to bring forward because of the multifamily projects we've talked about. If somebody wanted to move fast, likely you would be doing that on a piece of ground that was already prepped. But definitely that whole with infrastructure, without infrastructure scenario for multifamily, for probably something like townhouses, and then possibly looking at fourplexes or even a tower complex is something that we're working through right now.
Right. Yeah, so we're going to be looking at a variety of different products and how those work economically and and what they what they look like in the market.
But we wanted to address this one, especially in the second one, because I think of the consistent thing that we've been hearing, both as the city and and as a community, is multifamily is is we just can't make the numbers work. And so we wanted to be able to start to look at that question of why can't it work? Where are those costs hitting that bottom line, and what does that number look like?
And 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 you can see from this, this demonstration, why why that's happening, where where those where those costs are.
Well, what this slide is is starting to get us to think about is whether it's with infrastructure, without infrastructure, townhomes, towers, fourplexes, how how do these economic incentives make a difference on that overall cost? You know, if we get back to what is an individual paying for rent a month? Is sixteen hundred-ish bucks a month possible? Well, if we take twenty-two cents off a square foot versus three cents off a square foot versus nine cents off a square foot, how how do the economic incentives we're putting forward make an impact on a project? And now, and knowing we can't be all things to all projects, and that whatever incentives we put forward will have an impact on our bottom line, this starts to to help us see as we develop policies for these different incentives, what those impacts will be on projects and the types of projects they'll impact.
Yeah, and and, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just looking, and we debate about a lot of different economic incentive policies and applications for a variety of projects. And maybe, maybe I'm being pessimistic, but I'm not seeing that it makes a tremendous amount of difference there. I mean, twenty-two cents savings on 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 monthly rent per square foot.
Per square foot.
Okay, there you go, all right.
Yeah, it makes a pretty big difference.
Almost two hundred bucks a month.
Just, just so you don't feel bad, I had the same impression.
I'm sorry, we should, we should have calculated the savings per square foot. Yeah, yeah, so multiply that by nine hundred, and then you, yeah, then it, it's a little bit different.
Yeah, in fact, that twenty-two cents on a nine hundred square foot apartment comes out to a hundred and ninety-eight bucks.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Yeah, so it is, it is a big deal, actually.
Okay, one question. This is based on a greenfield development, is that correct?
No, no, it's based, it's based, yeah, it's based on 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 a a, an open vacant site with services.
Okay, so it's vacant with with services, all right. So the potential lower cost of, well, do you figure land is cheaper with greenfield or in in town?
It's cheaper, it's, well, good question. It's cheaper per square foot for raw land. But but then you have to provide the services, then you have to provide the the utilities and infrastructure. So it's actually more expen- well, it's more, it's, it's, it's actually kind of six of one and half a dozen of another because the four dollars a square foot cost for the improved land includes the infrastructure cost.
Right, because what I was wondering down the road was, does the cost of putting the, you know, the utilities and exceed the savings in purchase price of the land?
Theoretically, no. Because because them, that number, the cost of the infrastructure should be cooked into the price of the land. There, so you're, so you might be paying, say, oh, fifteen thousand dollars an acre for raw, for raw land. But but you might be paying, I don't know, a few, you you might be paying a couple hundred thousand dollars an acre to put the infrastructure in.
And I do think it's worth noting, too, when we talk about scenarios of, you know, more traditional owner-occupied, smaller homes or duplexes or townhomes versus rental in, you know, fifty units in some kind of fourplexes or eightplexes, you're taking up a lot more land, and the internal drive system for an apartment complex can be fairly compact, and you can get a whole lot of units. If you're spreading out over a number of acres for, let's say, fifty to a hundred units, you're going to have a lot more road to install. And so that cost, too, of spreading that infrastructure out over a piece of property versus kind of that more compact scenario and something denser will definitely node, be noticeable in raw land, for sure.
That's, that's right. Yeah, exactly right, that.
Mike's Craig here, just to clarify, the the scenario, the assumptions for this scenario are four dollars a square foot for site development. So that includes land acquisition and infrastructure. So if if those numbers are in the right ballpark, that should account for greenfield development, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's, well, it's, it's, it's four dollars a square foot. What we're assuming here is that we're, we're building on a site that's got services. So it's four dollars a square foot, which includes the cost of what's already in the ground, so it doesn't have to be repeated. Then the site development and parking costs are on top of, on on top of that. So so, you know, if you're looking at something like, like, like land plus site plus parking, then it's going to come out to be something like seven or eight dollars a square foot.
Commissioner Franz here again. If that being the case, if that four dollars includes the underlying infrastructure, by the time you get to the influence on rents, it it may be kind of a wash as a greenfield versus already-developed site?
Yes, theoretically, it would be, it would be a wash. Yeah, theoretically, you know, I mean, there, somebody's going to establish a value on on improved improved land that presumably includes the price of the infrastructure that went into it that's establishing that price. So so you're going to, you're, you're, you'll be paying, oh, you know, something, say, something like at four dollars a square foot, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars an acre for the improved land, and you might be paying fifteen thousand dollars an acre for for quote, greenfield land, that is raw land without improvements.
Well, and what we're not talking about with the greenfield Well, and what we're not talking about with the greenfield development either is if particularly if it's right there on the edge of the city, if there's some type of specials that are waiting to be applied to those properties when they get developed, that isn't even cooked into any of these scenarios yet, which we do have some of those in areas we expanded our system.
That's right. And specials help. Specials help because that's the that's not getting financed exactly off, well, it is getting financed off the rent. But but it isn't it it isn't financed by the developer at at their private rates. It's being financed ultimately by the rents of people who are paying the the rent that includes the assessment charge.
Another added variable for greenfield sites is perimeter roads and our policy is.
Yes, yes. Yeah, yes.
So Commissioner Franz, if that goes back to your question of is this all a wash if we're looking at greenfield versus infill development? I don't think it is. Because if you look at the majority of our available greenfield sites, you're likely going to look at some kind of some road impact fee like Mike was just mentioning, or we're going to have some remaining specials related to water and sewer extensions that a lot of times will need to be considered. So there will definitely be additional costs for greenfield.
And and then you've got your your basic cost of municipal services, too, on top of that. So so fire and fire protection, public safety, things like that get stretched out a little bit farther. And so those tho- those those get factored in. But again, that's on the city operating side, not necessarily at the developer's cost. So Lauren, you've got another slide, I think, in there.
Yeah. Well, I think this is where, thanks, Marty. We just wanted to kind of wrap things up. And from some of those numbers that we've looked at, some of them are things we do and some of them are things that we haven't done, could do, maybe can't do. So if we kind of divide those out, tax abatement or some type of increment system, we can do through RHID. We can do through NRA or IRB. And there's slight differences in each of those, but in general, they kind of work the same way. And that's getting to some type of way of dealing with property tax. Reducing construction costs, much of that is out of our control, but there is a uniqueness to IRB that sales tax on construction materials can be eliminated through the IRB. So that may be one way to impact construction costs. SRA would be able to waive permit fees. That's one way to help in certain cost areas and something we do do and can do. Special Assessment District, I would say that Salina has never tried this. It's it's not very common, but CID's, for instance, are a method for doing this. You see them more often in kind of urbanized mixed use areas. And that's by putting a specialty tax over that district. It's being collected, which then goes to do something. And in this case, it would be to emphasize housing in a certain way. We haven't done it that way before, but it is something we have an adopted CID policy and can do CID's. And then we do have the land bank for certain scenarios where even though we haven't pushed through a policy, we do have a legal and existing bank. And if something came up where the commission said, you know, look, we need to move this particular property into the bank either to hold it so it's not collecting taxes, or we need to wash it of taxes because it's in foreclosure or had tax issues, we could do that. And that's a tool in our toolbox. Of the other ones that Marty mentioned that we're definitely going to be looking more at, that would be things that are coming up in Presentation Three. And I should mention, too, not just need to know more of, some of them are things that are aren't in our wheelhouse. We can support them through letters of recommendation like BMIH, which is Modern Income Housing, which is a grant program through Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. That program's all them. It's money out of the Kansas State Trust Fund for housing. We can support it, but we don't do it. Kind of like Lytec, we can offer that support, but we aren't the ones who are granting that designation. Historic tax credits, I think just about every commissioner has experience with that. Again, it's something we can support and help with that process, but we aren't that final decision maker on how that gets awarded. But that is something that can be coupled with, like MIH, these other things that are in our toolbox to make some pretty powerful economic incentives. Things like higher density, free land, I think are things that we could maybe look at and are possible techniques. Deferred Cash ROI, interest subsidies and longer term loans, definitely. I don't think off the bat seemed like there's something in our wheelhouse, but part of the research that Marty and his team are doing between now and our April meeting is how are municipalities doing those things? And if so, what does that look like? And then lastly, is just a big old other, you know, part of looking at our neighbors and and looking at things outside the box is definitely part of this. Because like I mentioned earlier, we have a lot of other communities that are very similar situations to ours and grappling with this problem has significant impacts through many areas of the community, not just our economic growth, but our long term growth, even if we want to keep our current employment. So with that, I'll just remind everybody that we have the third presentation in April and then the fourth one is in May. And those are the first Monday study sessions. And those will start at two. Because I think Marty's going to have quite a bit more material to go through. And those will be opportunities definitely for the commission to get policy feedback and direction. So we wanted to make sure we had enough time for that.
Right.
Ms. Riscull, if that if that is the case that you would like to get some policy feedback at that point, would it be possible to include that information in our packet when it goes out on Thursdays? It's it's always helpful for me, I can't speak for the other commissioners, but to have a few days to take a look at that and absorb it and and have have better input and better questions when we're here on Monday.
Of course, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Hoppick here. And I appreciate this, and we're looking at this study going through May. How do you perceive us moving forward if something comes to us prior to the May meeting?
Staff was under the impression, following the last study session that we had, that if viable projects that could work with known tools, economic tools that we had, had been presented, that you would like us to bring those forward to you for the commission to look at further.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure of that because.
Yeah, that would certainly be our recommendation, given given the need coming.
From a timing standpoint, trying to get something done before the middle of 2022, you know, there there is a timeframe involved to to keep this moving forward if someone has a project. So.
For what it's worth, Commissioners, staff's having conversations with developers that are indicating interest and and we're having conversations about these type of tools and in a little bit more detail in terms of what are eligible expenses and how they might work. And so we're having ongoing conversations about what what's their vision for their project, what's their proposal look like, and can we get it framed up in a way to bring it back to you for your consideration? So we're going to work on this policy question and the housing study update, as well as having ongoing conversations with developers that indicate interest.
This Commissioner Davis, and that's not like the broken record, but I'm hoping at some point between now and then, we'll also have had our strategic planning session. Because I mean, this is one of the big topics that
It is. There's a couple of others that are stacking up along the same lines, but yes.
I'm sure.
Absolutely. And yeah, we need, we definitely need to do that. There's some other projects that are kind of holding fire, too, that we really need to sit down and have conversations about.
Well, another factor that's a recent added twist is the federal legislation about stimulus and what that might mean locally and what eligible expenses might be. And that's a whole interrelated conversation. It's definitely a strategic planning conversation. So staff's trying to get a sense of the legislation as it evolves and what that's going to look like for us.
Thank you. And I do see that we have several members of the public. I don't know if there's anyone who wants to ask a question really quickly, because we probably only have about five minutes to deal with that. First, are there any further questions or comments from the commission? Right. And and hopefully, if we don't get with you today, you can email us at citycommission@salina.org. You can reach out to us or hopefully by starting future study sessions at 2 o'clock, we'll have a little bit more time to take public input. Is there anyone that would like to speak to speak briefly right now before we break for the regular meeting? Please raise your virtual hand if you know how to do that on Zoom. And if you don't know how to do that on Zoom, turn on your camera and raise your physical hand and Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood will unmute you so that you can participate.
Yeah, I don't see any at this time, anybody in the room, though I don't know that we asked the Okay, it doesn't look like anybody in the room.
Okay. All right, great. Well, Mr. Schuker, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Riscull. Really appreciate.
Thank you. And I I know it's it can be a little dry and there are a lot of numbers, but it's pretty, it is pretty interesting stuff. So I appreciate it and look forward to next month.
Great. So do we. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll adjourn the study session now and return to the open meeting here in about eight minutes. Thank you.